Right, we're now ready to start, but first of all Katrina needs to say a few things about some updates.
Thank you Chairman, I just wanted to update members on further representations that we've received. We have a petition, that we had a large number of signatories, we had a further nineteen written signatories submitted, and we've been updated that they now have two thousand nine hundred and thirty-two electronic signatures, I think as at this morning, and that's a petition against the application. We also have a representation from the New York elected officials that came in on, I think came in on Friday, that I think has been circulated to members. We've also had an email representation from a Mr Byrne, again that was on Friday, email representation and a letter to Yorkshire Post from Dr David Lowry. We've had emails from Mr and Mrs Campion on the twentieth, again that was on Friday. We've also had a response from the HSE regarding the issue that was raised on Friday in one of the presentations. We've had a further email from Mrs Irene Turner, which has been referred to earlier by the Chairman. There's been a request that that be read out, and we've also had some legal advice obtained by Friends of the Earth, which has been submitted to the Chairman on Saturday, and that will be raised with members as we go through the day.
Thank you Katrina. I'll now call John Dewar from the applicants, if you can introduce your team John, as and if you see necessary. So you have quite a lot of time because you are entitled to the same time as the objectors, which could be a long time.
My name is John Dewar, I am the Operations Director of Third Energy, and I will have personal responsibility for the planning, health and safety, environment and security of the hydraulic fracturing operation at KM8. It will be my job to ensure that we have the resources, skills, plans and procedures in place to ensure that we conduct a safe and environmentally sound operation in much the same way as we have been doing for the last twenty years. I have an Honours Degree in Mining Engineering and a post-grad degree in Petroleum Engineering. My career spans over four decades. I have been deeply involved in the planning and permitting for all activities that Third Energy has conducted in recent years in both Ebbstone Moor and the Vale of Pickering. In this time, we have invested over thirty-five million pounds in onshore operations in the UK which were all conducted in a safe and environmentally sound manner. Our company mantra is, if something can't be done safely, then it doesn't get done at all. On Friday, a statement was made which called into question our safety management. We have clarified this claim in a written statement which is available to the committee. I can assure members that standard operating procedures were followed and that there was no risk to safety or the environment. The Environment Agency were concerned about an order complaint, not a leak. The Environmental Health Officer at Rydell District Council was immediately informed. Since then, we have revised our procedures and contact details with the Environment Agency, which they have formally acknowledged. For a long time, I have been waiting to meet someone with an in-depth understanding of well construction, hydraulic fracturing, UK regulations and the planning and permitting process, to explain to me that hydraulic fracturing cannot be done safely or environmentally soundly. On Friday, we heard from Mr Matt Farley, the only genuinely experienced oil and gas person I have ever heard speak on behalf of Frack Free Rydell. This caught my attention. During his speech however, his exact words were, fracking a well can be undertaken safely. And this is from someone whose experience was based on Australia and the United States. With over two million wells hydraulically fractured in the world to date, and one scare story after another being debunked, including the very first one from the film Gasland about lighting a tap in Colorado, the statistics as well as the science support the findings in our planning application as well as your planning officer's report and recommendation. For the avoidance of doubt, and I say this as a well engineering manager with decades of experience, hydraulic fracturing is not novel. The volume of fluid in high-volume hydraulic fracturing may be greater than in conventional hydraulic fracturing, but that alone does not make it novel, especially as high-volume hydraulic fracturing is being conducted routinely in the North Sea. The science of hydraulic fracturing is well understood. The equipment and procedures have got safer, cleaner and more efficient over time. With state-of-the-art computer software and a better understanding of the subsurface, we are now able to design individual fractures for different geological formations. We can now estimate with more accuracy the length, direction and thickness of the propagated fracture. And the fractures at their widest point are only the thickness of your finger and take place kilometres underground. The hydraulic fracturing of the KM8 well will be much less intrusive than a typical drilling operation in terms of duration, noise, light, traffic, visual effects and HGV movements. And KM8 is called KM8 for a reason. It is called KM8 because it was the eighth well to be drilled in the Kirby Missperton area. Over the period of these eight wells being drilled, life has gone on in Kirby Missperton and its surrounding villages. Many new people have moved into the area, houses have been built, bought, rented and sold. The presence of working and producing well pads has not been an issue for local farmers, residents or tourists over the last twenty years. In fact, the number of visitors to Flamingoland has increased by thirty-two percent since nineteen ninety-six. If this application had been for a conventional drilling operation only called KM9, I'm quite sure that it would not have attracted the same level of public and media attention. What a difference a word makes. Looking back on the speeches from Friday and again this morning, we have heard almost eight hours of statements from concerned residents and from others from outside of Rydell. By just listening to their concerns, I can tell that very few were referring to the application itself. It raises the question whether they have actually read the planning application, the environmental statement, the regulations or even the planning officer's report. During the public consultations, we have listened to people's concerns and have addressed them in the planning and permitting documentation as well as the subsequent requests for further information. Our answers to their concerns have been robust and true to science. However, many misunderstandings still occur, and we heard many of them on Friday and again this morning. For example, the claim that we are planning to use shipping containers stacked nine metres high is not valid, nor is the claim that we have no traffic management plan. Claims that we will be creating noise twenty-four hours a day for six months are also not valid. The audio tape from Frack Free Rydell of a hydraulic fracturing operation sounded to me more like a pneumatic drill than a hydraulic pump. The claims that we are going to use toxic chemicals and biocides are also not true. There is also a misunderstanding about what nine years of production actually means. Gas production is a virtually silent process, as anyone who has visited our sites can testify. The KMA site has been gathering and producing gas for the last twenty years. Our completion is green as it goes straight into the production process and we also monitor for methane leaks because methane is our main product and we don't want to lose any of it. More misunderstandings around health, air quality, waste handling, tax, insurance and legacy will be handled by subsequent speakers. The most ludicrous claim is the one that stated we use depleted uranium and perforating guns. This is not true and simply ridiculous. It shows again that a little bit of knowledge coupled with a lack of technical qualifications and experience is a potent mix for creating a misunderstanding or even a scare story. As the saying goes, a lie can travel halfway around the world before the truth can get its boots on. And that was even said before the advent of the internet. One of the major learnings out of the United States was the lack of baseline measurements. At the request of the North Yorkshire County Council, we have been conducting baseline studies on noise, light, ecology, flood risk, hydrogeology, seismicity, traffic, waste, cultural heritage, socio-economics, landscape, health and air quality to monitor the future effects of our operations. In addition, the British Geological Survey are conducting their own independent set of measurements for hydrogeology, seismicity, air quality, soil and radon. The results of these studies will be publicly available. Can the objectors really claim that they have the support of all the residents in North Yorkshire? Many open-minded people I have spoken to in Rydell tell me that they are supportive of the local gas industry but are scared to say it in public. You can see why. Is this democracy? After many appeals on social media, what do twenty thousand objection letters across the whole of the UK mean? Sixty-four percent of them were templates, especially as there are over fifty thousand people in the county and around sixty-four million in the UK. If this was just a numbers game, I could have appealed for support letters from the ninety thousand people who have recently lost their jobs following the drop in the oil price, not to mention those who are still working in the industry and those at colleges and universities who will be looking for jobs once they graduate. Instead, we have prepared to let the planning application speak for itself. During last year's general election, the candidates for Thirsk and Molton who openly opposed hydraulic fracturing came last, second last, third last and fourth last, collecting only seventeen percent of the total vote between them. I firmly believe that we do have a social licence to operate. Some of the objectors have been to Pennsylvania and came back with a different impression than our local MP. I too have been to Pennsylvania recently and visited many producing well pads, talked with operators, locals, councillors and businessmen and witnessed several drilling and fracking operations at first hand. I can assure the committee that our MP's assessment was much more thorough and balanced than the objectors' views. Any person who can remember what Pennsylvania was like after the collapse of the steel industry and compare that to how it is today would see that there have been enormous benefits in terms of new jobs, wealth creation, improvements to local infrastructure and general quality of life. Over the years, I have made many friends in Rydell. Most of my staff live locally and are tied into the Rydell way of life. I am originally from farming stock in Aberdeenshire and know full well how important the land is to a community and to the country. I also know how important the energy industry is to the UK and what it means to have our own energy security and technical skills which we can export round the world. The gas industry in Rydell has been working alongside the community, tourism and farming for twenty years and gas will still be needed by our nation for many years to come. The Royal Society, the Royal Academy of Engineering, Public Health England and many more eminent societies have all said that hydraulic fracturing can be done safely in a well-regulated environment. Even Frack Free Rydell's own drilling expert said the same. Following me, you will hear statements from a number of our experts across a range of issues crucial to this application. This will include health, seismicity, groundwater protection, landscape, noise, ecology, air quality and waste handling. We have left no stone unturned in the preparation of this application. Neither has the planning officer, who along with our backroom team have done a detailed and professional evaluation of the application. Since the start of this journey, I have always stated that the truth will out. Let me finish with a quote from Sir Winston Churchill. "The truth is incontrovertible. Malice may attack it, ignorance may deride it, but in the end, there it is." I urge the committee to do the right thing for Rydell, North Yorkshire and the UK by supporting your planning officer's recommendation. Thank you Chair.
If you could introduce the next member of your team.
The next member of the team will be Ken Cronin.
Good goosey name Ken please, we didn't quite hear that.
Good morning everyone, my name is Ken Cronin, I'm Chief Executive of the United Kingdom Onshore Oil and Gas. I'd like to thank the Chairman and the Committee for giving me the opportunity to speak. My organisation is a membership organisation, we are fully funded by its members. It's open to all UK onshore licence holders and operators and supply chain companies to the industry. Third Energy is a key member of that organisation. Last year, despite the low oil price, we as an industry invested over two hundred million into the UK economy and produced enough oil and gas to heat nearly a million homes. Gas provides eighty-four percent of our homes with heat, sixty-one percent with the means of cooking and up to fifty percent of our electricity and the employment of nearly half a million people in industries that turn natural gas into everyday products such as computers, mobile phones, cosmetics, medicines and fertilisers for over seventy-five percent of our farmers and even solar panels. In Yorkshire, twelve percent of the UK's gas is consumed, one of the largest outside of London. And manufacturing employs eleven percent of the population using gas for heat and raw materials. So this debate is highly relevant. However, fifteen years from now, without natural gas from shale, we will be importing more than seventy-five percent of our gas, no longer in control. Is that what we really want? I understand that some within the community are fearful, but they should take comfort from two very important facts. Firstly, we have four regulators that look at every single aspect of our business. Secondly, we have an extremely good record particularly here in Yorkshire. That regulatory system makes us look at all of the risks, the probability of them happening, what the physical pathway for that risk to travel could be and how we reduce the risk. There is no one with greater vested interest in ensuring all of our operations meet the highest standards than the industry itself. The four regulators each have specific roles to play. The Mineral Planning Authority with respect to local issues such as noise, transport, dust etcetera. The Health and Safety Executive with respect to well integrity and compliance with borehole legislation. The Environment Agency with respect to air, soil and water, who issue up to nine environmental permits connected to seventeen European directives. And finally, the Oil and Gas Authority, who ensure that the operator has the right operational experience and financial capacity alongside approving the environmental risk assessment and fracturing plan before advising the Secretary of State on giving drilling consent and where appropriate hydraulic fracturing consent. This provides a formidable regulatory framework with in my opinion no gaps, if anything, some overlaps. I would like to take one example of how this all fits together, and that is with respect to water protection. In my opinion, the most important protection to water has to be the integrity of the well itself to ensure no leaks to surrounding groundwater. This is completed by both ensuring the design of the well is done properly but also the well itself is properly constructed and tested. In terms of KM8, this has already been done and reviewed by an independent well examiner and the Health and Safety Executive. The next on the list has to be to ensure the operator has understood what pathways there could be to groundwater. The Environment Agency requires a hydrogeological risk assessment, clearly listing any credible sources of potential contamination from the site, identifying potential pathways for the migration of contamination and listing all the potential groundwater and surface water receptors. For KM8, this again has been completed and approved by the Environment Agency through the issue of permits. Next would be to ensure that whatever chemicals the operator may use, they are deemed to be non-toxic and stalled on the surface in the correct manner. The Environment Agency assesses the hazards presented by chemicals on a case-by-case basis. They will not permit the use of hazardous substances as defined in and determined for the purposes of the EU Water Framework and Groundwater Directives. The Environment Agency also regulates the storage of chemicals on site through environmental permits and the Health and Safety Executive regulates the safety of employees through the Safety at Work Act. Again, all of these permits have been completed and permitted for KM8. Finally, it's important to ensure that waste is managed correctly. The Environment Agency regulates the management of extractive waste implementing the EU Mining Waste Directive. Again, these permits have been issued. I believe that the EA and the HSE are here today. I urge the committee to ask them any questions they need but be satisfied that all of these issues have been looked at and are regulated properly. Many of the fears come from stories from the US. Yes, there have been isolated issues, mainly down to the construction of the well itself, a combination of both poor operatorship and poor regulation, neither of which apply in this country. Recently, the US Environmental Protection Agency, after studying thirty-eight thousand wells, found no systematic problem with water supply. Some of the common stories coming from the US, igniting the water tap, they could do that a hundred years ago before fracking. Emissions for wastewater lagoons, not allowed in this country. The spreading of waste products on roads, not allowed in this country. The use of unnamed chemicals, not allowed in this country. Flaring of large quantities of waste gas, not allowed in this country. The use of toxic chemicals, not allowed in this country. I hope this illustrates that these fears are unfounded because of the regulation in this country. I know one of the subjects that has been raised is insurance and I would like to clarify this matter fully for the committee. In terms of household insurance, the Association of British Insurers has consistently made the following three statements. One, damage as a result of earthquake, subsidence, heave, landslip are all covered in general under buildings insurance. Two, there is at present little evidence to show a link between fracking and seismic activity that could cause damage to a well-maintained property. However, insurers will continue to monitor the potential for fracking or similar expirations to cause damage. Three, they are not aware of any claims to date where seismic activity as a result of fracking has been mooted as a cause for damage. In the unlikely event of an operator causing damage, harm or pollution to the environment, they can be required under the regulatory regimes mentioned already to remediate the effects and prevent further damage or pollution. This is the same approach that applies to any industry. The industry under its licences with the Oil and Gas Authority must ensure that they are adequately insured for such things as loss of well control, third-party liability and environmental liability. Let me be clear, it is for the industry to be adequately insured, not the residents as this was out with their control. This is the same that applies for all types of industries. Operators' own policies will pay out to residents. In addition to insurance, legacy issues are clearly important. The process of decommissioning a well properly falls under the regulatory remit of the Health and Safety Executive. Once properly decommissioned, the Environment Agency will not allow the environmental permits that they have issued to be handed back until they are satisfied that there is no risk to the environment. This may be some time after decommissioning has taken place. The OGA will also ensure that no well consents are issued unless they are satisfied that the licensee has access to sufficient funds to meet its share of the actual drilling costs, the plugging and the abandonment of the well. The industry takes their commitments very seriously, but we firmly believe that legacy issues are within the remit of central government to control and coordinate on behalf of the nation. I have listened with some frustration to comments about mass industrialisation of the Yorkshire countryside and I have to admit that the industry has not been hugely clear by providing accurate information about potential pad density. This is something that UKOG has agreed to take up as an issue. At present, the industry is in the exploration phase and is trying to answer a number of the questions such as where the gas is, how will it flow and how much it will cost so that it will inform the true answer to the question of pad density. However, at present, UKOG is working on the basis of approximately ten pads the size of two football pitches per hundred kilometres squared. The industry has never been in a place in this country where we have pockmarked the landscape and we have no intention of doing so. This is down to two simple reasons. Our geology is very different and technology has moved on considerably. Today, we have over two hundred and fifty operating wells in this country that go unnoticed by the vast majority. Turning to climate change. As a result of the North Sea, the gas we have seen shows a massive shift from coal to gas over the last thirty years alongside carbon dioxide emissions and methane emissions reducing substantially as well as significant improvements to air quality. The North Sea was the best engine for meeting the energy trilemma of energy security, economic and environmental concerns that we have ever seen. The reality is, we will need all forms of energy, be it gas, nuclear or renewables to meet the next stage of that trilemma. Even if we had a completely renewable electricity system, we would still need large amounts of gas to heat our homes, use for cooking and for the, um, the, creating nearly six thousand products from oil and gas as a feedstock that would sustain over five hundred thousand jobs in the UK. That's why the Department of Energy and Climate Change are forecasting we will use roughly the same amount of gas in twenty thirty-five as we do today. At a global level, gas is certainly a part of the solution to climate change. The coal-to-gas switch we have seen in Britain can be replicated in other countries. In the International Energy Agency's four hundred and fifty parts per million scenario, global emissions are kept at a level that gives us a decent chance of avoiding more than two degrees warming. And in that scenario, global gas use is higher in twenty forty than it is today. The scenario is backed up by the UK's Committee on Climate Change which says gas plays a key role through to twenty fifty. The UK is increasingly dependent on imports which currently cost us eighteen million pounds a day and some predictions say that will rise to ten billion pounds in fifteen years. Money that is not generating jobs or tax revenues in this country. However, there is also an important environmental impact of these imports. As Professors Mackay and Stone have recently concluded, life-cycle greenhouse gas emissions from UK-produced shale are lower than gas imported by LNG or long-distance pipeline. This conclusion isn't surprising. Importing gas takes a lot of energy at multiple stages to transport it across oceans and continents, regasify it, liquefy it to a British terminal. This scenario raises a serious question. Are we happy as a country to benefit from using gas but only so long it is produced somewhere else? As the GMB Union has pointed out, we need to honestly consider the moral and environmental issues about transporting gas across oceans and continents and being increasingly dependent on gas from countries with regulatory and environmental and human rights standards lower than our own. This has been a long process and I thank the councillors and their officials for their diligence. I have tried here today, as some of the other speakers will do also, to address the issues that... that the residents have. I support the application from Third Energy. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr Cronin. I have a list of speakers here, and I will work through it unless I'm told differently. Yeah. The next speaker is Jonathan Foster, and he'll be followed by Andrew Barone.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Yes, my name is Jonathan Foster. I am born and bred North Yorkshire, and grew up in the shadows of Cleveland-Pottash Mine. I'm a father of three, and my family continues to live and work in North Yorkshire in farming, fishing, tourism, mining, and obviously, oil and gas. I found it surprising on Friday to hear that someone would believe, given our county's heritage of mining, that we do not have any mining engineers in North Yorkshire. I can assure you that is simply not the case. Myself, I have over 25 years' experience of oil and gas exploration and production onshore UK, the majority of which spent in North Yorkshire, searching for oil, gas, coal, and potash. I am the owner of a planning, safety, and environmental consultancy which employs a number of people locally, and in the context of this application, myself and my team are responsible for obtaining planning permission and environmental permits. We have been supporting Third Energy's existing gas field operations in North Yorkshire for almost 10 years, including the planning application to extend the Kirby-Mispaton Well Site and drill the KM8 Well, which was approved by North Yorkshire County Council under delegated powers in 2013. The HGV movements associated with the construction of the extension and the drilling of the KM8 Well Site far exceeded those proposed in this application. Likewise, so too did the duration of operation, lighting and visual impact, proposing a 49-metre-high drilling mast. What a difference the word 'fracking' makes to an application. As I'm sure you are aware from your training with Atlas, and further explained today by Ken Cronin, Chief Executive of UKO, there is a robust regulatory framework associated with oil and gas activities onshore UK. This framework provides for a clear distinction between government departments and agencies regulating various aspects of well operations, and the review processes, public consultation, and consenting each has to determine whether proposed developments and/or operations are acceptable. It is this regulatory framework surrounding this planning application I wish to address with you today. As you are well aware, the role of the minerals planning authorities determine whether the proposed development is an acceptable use of land, based solely on the planning merits of this application. I firmly believe that the evidence submitted in support of this planning application and environmental impact assessment has addressed every material planning consideration and demonstrates that this proposal accords with relevant national and local policy, and, in line with your own planning officers' assessment, warrants approval, as it has been deemed an acceptable use of land. Whilst we appreciate there are concerns, both locally and nationally, regarding hydraulic fracturing, safety, pollution, and seismicity fall outside the regulatory control of the Minerals Planning Authority, and are regulated by the Health and Safety Executive, the Environment Agency, and the Oil and Gas Authority respectively. Firstly, is it safe? Not only has the Health and Safety Executive raised no objections, issues all concerns regarding the proposed development, on Friday we heard Frackfree Rydell's own fracking experts say it was safe. You have heard that hydraulic fracturing is novel. I don't share that view, particularly as it's not novel to the people undertaking the operation, nor is it novel to the regulator. Hydraulic fracturing has and continues to be undertaken in the North Sea. It requires the same level of safety and environmental protection that is afforded to onshore, and is regulated by the same personnel, whether it be onshore or offshore. Secondly, will it cause pollution? The Environment Agency issued permits on 11th of April 2016, following extensive consultation and rigorous review. The issuing of the permits should give reassurance that risks of pollution have been identified and the correct level of mitigation put in place to the satisfaction of the Environment Agency. Conditions within the permit require Third Energy to undertake water quality monitoring, air quality monitoring, and seismicity monitoring. We heard objectors casting doubt as to whether the Environment Agency has the resources to regulate this operation. Again, I do not share that view. I have personally seen, and so too your planning officers, that there has been an increase of Environmental Agency personnel over the last couple of years with respect to oil and gas. A dedicated team has been established, and includes a number of people with oilfield experience. Furthermore, a specific team has been established too, and is in the process of reviewing all existing well sites and permits to ensure that they align with the Environment Agency's most recent sector guidance for oil and gas. So what about seismicity? Before commencing a well operation, the operator, which in this case Third Energy, must notify and obtain consent from the Oil and Gas Authority. In the case of a hydraulic fracturing operation, the operator is required to submit a hydraulic fracture plan. The plan must include the monitoring of seismicity and the implementation of a traffic light system. I am aware that there have been concerns raised by objectors which do fall within the remit of the Minerals Planning Authority when determining whether an application is acceptable use of land. We heard on Friday concerns raised over air quality, ecology, landscape, noise, public health, traffic, seismicity, and waste. The majority of these concerns have been addressed in the planning application and will be further discussed individually by our panel of speakers. However, I would like to deal specifically with traffic. You heard concerns raised regarding HGV movements from and including the A169, Kirby-Mispaton Road, Main Street, and Habton Lane. How the roads were not suitable, and how other road users will be affected. In addition, Frackfree Rydell presented a video showing a HGV traversing the route in support of these concerns. Yet your own highways officers have assessed the application, have raised no objection, stating, "There are no local highway authority objections to this proposed development." Perhaps highways are, as I am, that the farming community, racehorse trainers, Flamingoland, and Third Energy have coexisted for over two decades without issue. In fact, over this period, visitor numbers to Flamingoland have increased. We also heard on Friday that it is most probably luck that there has not been a traffic-related incident during Third Energy's operations. I have to disagree, and state that it is by good traffic management. Contrary to Baroness Pickering's statement on Friday, that there was no traffic management plan in place, your highways officers have recommended that the proposed traffic management plan, yes, submitted with the planning application, include additional measures on Main Street to include an advisory speed limit of 20 miles an hour for HGV movements to and from the site. Contrary to the concerns that a 20 mile an hour speed limit is not enforceable, I would simply draw your attention to the requirement for the traffic management plan to be secured by condition, ergo, enforceable by Minerals Planning Authority. You also heard concerns being raised regarding Kirby-Mispaton Bridge, and it being unsuitable for the proposed development. Again, your highways officers have raised no objection, stating, "A structural assessment of Kirby-Mispaton Bridge has been carried out by the applicant, and this has found the bridge to be good condition and capable of carrying the predicted loads, including a few loads that will be over 44 tonnes. It is recommended that abnormal loads travel over the bridge at reduced speed." I've always prided myself on taking a pragmatic view on matters. I guess that's a North Yorkshire thing. Taking a pragmatic view, Third Energy is not the only business needing to cross the Kirby-Mispaton Bridge. We heard on Friday how important Flamingoland is for the tourism and the economy, which I agree, it is. But ask yourself how many HGVs does it take to run and maintain Flamingoland? HGVs, cranes, quarry trucks, all using the same bridge, same weights, and same risks. What I do know is that it takes large cranes to build theme parks, and an example is on your screen right now of Flamingoland. In closing, I would like to draw members to paragraph 122 of the National Planning Policy Framework, which states that local planning authorities should focus on whether the development itself is an acceptable use of land, and the impacts of that use, rather than the control of processes or emissions themselves, where these are subject to approval under pollution control regimes. Local planning authorities should assume that these regimes will operate effectively. We know that the Health and Safety Executive has not raised any objections to the proposed development. The Environment Agency, having issued environmental permits, is satisfied that the risks of pollution have been identified and the correct level of mitigation put in place, and the Oil and Gas Authority must approve a hydraulic fracture plan before the operation can commence. It was repeatedly stated on Friday that it starts with one well. Given that this could be the first well to be hydraulically fractured since Priesthall in Lancashire, one thing we can all be absolutely sure of, which is logic and common sense, that every regulator with accountability for regulating this operation will have every expert monitoring this in minute detail. You'll now hear from our panel of speakers with respect to air quality, ecology, landscape, noise, public health, seismicity, and waste, and for you, the committee members, to decide whether the proposed development is an acceptable use of land. Can I thank you, Chairman and committee members, for giving me the opportunity to make this presentation in support of the application before you today? I would also like to thank the planning officer and her team for their rigorous and professional review of the application and their subsequent recommendation for approval. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Andrew Barone, followed by Michael Kendall.
My name is Dr Andrew Barone. I am the Health and Social Impact Assessment Practice Leader at RPS, with more than 16 years of experience on integrating, assessing, and communicating health on projects for the public and private sector alike. I have a PhD in International Health Impact Assessment Best Practice, a master's in Environmental Impact Assessment, and a biological and biomedical degree. I'm a Fellow of the Royal Society of Medicine and a temporary advisor to the World Health Organisation. In relation to unconventional gas, I have performed a comprehensive literature review of the health evidence base, developed best practice guidance for the industry, and provided input to the Shell Gas Task Force and a briefing at the House of Lords. The protection of human health has always been fundamental to planning, with the complex, multidisciplinary nature of health was by necessity split into environmental health pathways, such as air quality, noise, transport, hydrology, hydrogeology, et cetera. And each is assessed to discipline specific regulatory standards set to protect the environment and health. However, it is important to recognise that the EIA is a technical document written by experts for experts, structured to conform to the strict UK planning regime. Environmental statements can be huge, difficult to navigate, and may not present information in a context that meets the wider public requirements or expectations. For this reason, and in keeping with best practice, Third Energy included a public health section in the ES to further communicate and respond to community health concerns. The public health section in the ES covers all of the potential hazards directly attributable to what is proposed here, including all of the health concerns raised at these proceedings. In summary, none of the hazards are unique to this industry, and are already addressed through planning and permitting. For air quality, the project remains within long-term air quality objectives set to protect health, and the relative change is not of a level to quantify any influence on the health. Fracture fluids in the UK are non-hazardous to groundwater, and further addressed through well integrity and design. HGV movements are less than a typical bus stop, and less than previous activity at the site. Noise has been assessed to World Health Organisation guidance, and induced seismicity, this is not a public health risk, being no greater than someone jumping off a chair, and is again addressed through design and management microseismic array. All wastewater and drilling wastes, including norm, must comply with the regulatory permitting process, and environmental monitoring is set at levels that precludes and allows intervention before any manifest health disorder. Residual concern or risk perception is probably the greatest issue, and can result in significant stress and anxiety, not to mention uncertainty as to where the general public can turn to for robust and impartial information. However, such concerns are largely due to a lack of transparency and awareness as to where known hazards are already addressed, or where hazards from different projects, of different scales, with different processes, on different continents, with different regulatory requirements, are applied out of context to incorrectly infer risk here. A common factor associated with many of the community health concerns raised is a misunderstanding of the terms hazard and risk. In its simplest form, a hazard is any agent with the potential to cause harm, and a risk is the likely of harm occurring. A hazard by itself does not constitute a risk. It is only when there is a hazard source, a person, and a pathway of exposure connecting the two that there is any potential for risk. Community concerns can manifest when the source-pathway receptor concept is either ignored or misapplied to infer risk where there may be no potential. This is typically where a hazard source is presented with no credible pathway to exposure to infer risk, or when hazards drawn from different projects are incorrectly assumed to exist here. As an example, there have been significant health concerns raised regarding undisclosed or hazardous hydraulic fracture fluid used in the US and Australia, the use of evaporation ponds, and the potential risk they pose to groundwater and locally abstracted drinking water. In the UK, all hydraulic fracking fluids are fully disclosed and must be non-hazardous to groundwater, thereby removing the hazard. Well location, design, and integrity are then further applied to minimise the risk to groundwater. A site design, management, and waste management are in place to manage the risk of surface water contamination, thereby further decoupling the pathway linkage. On this basis, design in the EIA process serves to sever the source-pathway receptor linkage, thereby removing and reducing potential risk. It is then the purpose of environmental permitting to test and validate the protection of the environment, where a permit to operate will be issued and can be retracted by the regulator if this is not the case. It is precisely for this reason that when considering what is actually proposed here, no regulatory authority has objected. The project has been minded for consent by the planning authority, and while even Public Health England's Centre for Radiation, Chemical, and Environmental Hazards, and the North Yorkshire Director of Public Health have stated that they have no significant health concerns regarding risk to the health of the local population from the installation. As an additional example, benzene was raised on Friday as a potential hazard. At best, this represents a fundamental lack of awareness as to what is proposed here, and is a perfect example for Public Health England's warning of incorrectly applying information where they have no bearing to UK geology or regulation. This project will not produce benzene, and there is no benzene in the fracture fluid. The only remaining source is the emission from construction vehicles and equipment, but this is no different in nature to those generated during the construction of a wind turbine, a shop, a house, or a hospital. Silica, also known as sand, is hazardous given sufficient concentration and a particular mode of exposure, but neither is relevant in this instance. In conclusion, the EIA demonstrates that the project will comply with all regulatory requirements set to protect the environment and health. No regulatory authority has objected on health grounds. No project-specific evidence has been presented to question the ES, and both Public Health England and the Director of Public Health have no significant health concerns for this project. I'm aware that there is still a high level of community concern and risk perception, but for those of you still unclear on where to turn to for UK and European-specific information, I would urge you to review Public Health England's reports on potential public health impacts of shell gas extraction. The European Academy's Advisory Council, which is the collective voice of European science, they developed their own shell gas extraction issues of particular relevance to the European Union, and the Scottish Government's Independent Expert Scientific Panel report on unconventional oil and gas. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Michael Kendall, followed by Phil Ham.
Okay, so I'm not Mike Kendall, I'm Andy Mortimer. I will be standing in for Mike Kendall, and I'll explain the reasons for that in a moment. So, my name's Andy Mortimer, and I'm the Subsurface Director of Third Energy. More specifically, I have a degree in geology from Aston University, an MSc from Imperial College in London, and a PhD in geology from Aberystwyth University. The subject of my research was the same age rocks that we are discussing to be fracked in the Kirby-Mispaton Well, and I studied those both for the offshore area of the Southern North Sea, and I did a bunch of onshore fieldwork to compare and contrast. I first started work in the oil industry in 1991, and I've worked extensively both overseas in countries like Indonesia and in the USA, but I spent the majority of my working career evaluating the carboniferous rocks of the Southern North Sea and onshore for various oil companies. During this time, I've been responsible for drilling many wells, all of which have been drilled very safely, and in particular, I was the person that recommended the drilling of the well KM8. We've recently announced the Pegasus gas discovery in the Southern North Sea. We've co-authored a number of technical papers with my team at Third Energy. Many of you may be surprised to know that over 100 wells have been drilled in this region, and apart from those that are still in production, all of those wells have been successfully abandoned and the land reclaimed, and I doubt whether many of you know where those sites are because they are now being agricultural land and used for production. Also, just recently last year, my technical team presented a paper on the geology of the Kirby Missperton KM8 well at a conference organised by the Petroleum Geological Society of London, a very prestigious conference. We presented the paper and we were awarded the best paper at the entire conference for its scientific content. I believe I can justifiably claim to you gentlemen that I am an expert in the carboniferous geology and in particular in the geology beneath the Kirby Missperton. We've talked extensively to the government agencies, OGA, the environmental agencies. We've checked their guidelines and ensured that we are fulfilling their guidelines. We've also arranged village hall meetings where we've talked to the locals and I personally have been to those village hall meetings and talked to the individuals there to explain to them and hopefully those conversations helped remove some of their concerns. My role as the Subsurface Director covers a broad area of geology, but I'm here today to talk to you about one very important aspect of that work, which is the monitoring of the seismicity. Now, we had planned for Professor Mike Kendall, a specialist in seismology, to come and present to you. He would have been independent of Third Energy to give you that independent view. Unfortunately, because of the rearrangement and the extension here on to Monday, he is no longer available, so I'm having to stand in for his place. Let's be clear from the start, fracking at KM8 is highly unlikely, highly unlikely to cause any sort of earth tremor, let alone something that you and I might call an earthquake. Hundreds of thousands, if not millions, of separate fracking operations have taken place around the globe. Very few of those have caused any sort of seismicity that could be felt by a human They do, however, create events, which we call seismic events. Now, we use those seismic events with our monitors to measure how far the hydraulic fractures are propagating in the subsurface. We can measure how far they are extending laterally and how far they are extending in height. We will be able to monitor that when we frac KM8. These seismic events are several orders of magnitude smaller than anything that you and I can feel as a human person. The term earthquake, of course, is very, very emotive, but we only need to really worry about earthquakes when they are larger than, let's say, about five on the Richter scale. Less than three, we can't feel them. There have only been, as I said before, a few cases when hydraulic fracturing has caused seismic tremors which we can feel. The one that we have heard in the media is the one at Priesthall. That caused two seismic events, one at 1.5 and one at 2.5, not very big earth tremors. Now, the reason this occurred is because the operator in this particular case drilled a well in an area which is known to be seismically active. It's in an area where there are many small earthquakes that take place. They did it without a 3D, and unfortunately, when they drilled the well, they intersected a fault. Now, this is just not the case at Kirby Missperton. First of all, we have an excellent quality seismic 3D survey, and this is what gives us a picture of what is in the subsurface. We have been able to map all the big faults and all the not-so-big faults in the area. I can assure you gentlemen that the well KM8 is drilled a safe distance away from any of these faults. Furthermore, this seismic data also tells us about the age of these faults. These faults, unlike the ones at Priesthall, are all very old, and by very old, I mean 250 million years old or more. They have not been active since then. Any of the energy that caused these faults to move in the first place has long, long Other supporting evidence for this is the fact that the Kirby Missperton area is in an area which is seismically benign. You can see this for yourself if you go to the British Geological Survey website. You can log on to a page there which shows where the earthquakes in the UK happen. There are hundreds a year, hundreds, but for North Yorkshire, there's only been five in the last few decades. There was one, however, last year in December. I wonder how many of you felt that? It was 1.5 on the Richter scale. The lack of seismicity tells us something very important about the subsurface. It tells us that the environment, the stress in the subsurface is very low, and that means that the faults that exist down there are not stressed, they're not susceptible to reactivation. However, because we appreciate that there is a significant amount of concern, we have put in place plans for a traffic light system. Now, that traffic light system has involved the deployment already of two seismic monitoring arrays, one by Third Energy and one by the BGS. The BGS1 is completely independent of Third Energy. This traffic light system is designed to stop our operations if an event occurs that's greater than 0.5. Now, 0.5 is something that you and I won't feel, but it will stop our rations if we have an event near to a fault that is greater than 0.5. If it's between 0 and 0.5, our operations will be on standby, they will proceed, but they will do it with caution. If it's greater than 0.5, our operations will cease. To put 0.5 into context, there are quarries to the north and south of Kirby Missperton where their blasting activities are generating seismic signals that are greater than 2.5. So, we are stopping our operations at 0.5, and yet there are things causing apparent seismic events of greater than 2.5. Trains cause a seismic signal in the subsurface, also several orders of magnitude greater than our proposed threshold. And even when there is a storm in the atmosphere, that causes the trees to oscillate and to vibrate and create signals in the subsurface which are greater than 0.5. So, we've put in place a very, very safe margin to stop operations. These are all, this 0.5 criteria is also obviously much, much smaller than the earth tremors created by quadrilla in Lancashire. Third will have expert consultants monitoring the networks 24 hours a day while the operations are taking place. The data will be available to be independently monitored by the BGS and will be made available to the public, so they will be able to see the data for themselves and potentially anybody in seismologists or schools may be able to look at this data as it's recorded. But I do have to warn you, it will be a very boring study because there won't be much on there to see. I am very confident in saying to you that we will not cause an earthquake that you will be able to feel, an earth tremor that you will be able to feel. Members of the Planning Committee, it's documented in our planning application and our submissions to the environmental agency, but I hope that I have explained to you that the seismic monitoring programme that we have in place will safely monitor our activities and should we cause an earth tremor greater than 0.5, it will cause our operations to stop. That is a very safe margin of operations. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Phil Ham, then I will call Nigel Rockliff.
Good morning. My name is Dr Philip Ham. I'm a hydrogeologist. I work for a company called Enviro Water. I'm a director of that company and I manage a team of consultants based in our North Yorkshire office near Richmond. I also live in North Yorkshire. Enviro Water is a consultancy that specialises in natural water systems. We're scientists and engineers. What we do is we understand how groundwater systems work and interact. We don't just work in the oil and gas industry, we work in a range of sectors, including farming, brewing and bottled water. I myself have 15 years of professional experience working with water. I hold a first-class master's degree and a doctorate in hydrogeology. One of my particular areas of interest and expertise is understanding how private water supplies work and how they can be affected by different activities that might be going on around them. That interest stems from growing up on a hill farm on the Lancashire Yorkshire border that was and still is supplied by a private water supply, so I understand firsthand how these systems work and how precious they are. Enviro Water has been working with Third Energy since 2012 on a range of water-related issues and projects. In terms of the application that is before you today, we have completed the hydrogeological risk assessment and the flood risk assessment for the underground works, and by underground works, I mean the hydraulic fracturing operation. These are the same assessments that were submitted to the Environment Agency when Third Energy applied for a mining waste permit and other permits which were approved last The technical assessments that we have carried out show that for all practical purposes, the risks to water are essentially zero. And there are two important reasons why that's the case. The first reason relates to depth and to geology. The hydraulic fracturing that Third Energy is proposing will take place in five zones, up to about three kilometres below ground level. The closest of those fracture zones to surface is about two kilometres below the groundwater and surface water systems that need to be protected. That's two kilometres of vertical separation. The geology in the Vale of Pickering is such that there just isn't a plausible pathway between the zones of hydraulic fracturing and those surface water and groundwater systems that are at or close to surface. The only plausible connection is from the well itself, and that brings me on to my second reason. The way in which the KM8 well and the well site itself have been designed, constructed, tested, and the management and control measures that will be in place during the hydraulic fracturing operation means that any risks relating to leakage, surface spills, runoff from the well site itself can be eliminated. It's because there is such a high level of environmental protection built into the works that the risks to groundwater and surface water are essentially zero. Now, you don't just need to take my word for that. Our assessments are acknowledged by the Environment Agency, and as I've said earlier and others have said earlier, the Environment Agency has issued permits for these works. The permits are here in your supplementary bundles. I must stress that issuing a permit is not something that the Environment Agency can or has done lightly. The permits have been issued after about two years of detailed discussions between Third Energy, their advisers and the Environment Agency about the approach to hydraulic fracturing, the science and the regulations. This has been an incredibly thorough process. It has involved the Environment Agency's technical officers in York and experts from the National Oil and Gas permitting and legal teams. The Environment Agency can only issue a permit if they believe that the activity will not cause environmental harm. Our assessments are also acknowledged by Yorkshire Water, who agree that the works will not impact their drinking water supplies. Just like planning applications for quarrying that will pass regularly before this committee, appropriate monitoring needs to be undertaken to demonstrate that the hydraulic fracturing at KM8 will not impact groundwater or surface water. This first requires a baseline against which data collected during the works can be compared. For the last 14 months, we have been collecting and analysing water samples from wells, from boreholes, rivers, streams, ponds and springs, all manner of water features within about three kilometres of the well site. We are carrying out monitoring wherever we can. For the last two months, we've also been collecting samples from five specially-designed and constructed water monitoring boreholes at the well site itself. You will have seen those when you visited the well site on your trip last week. This approach to monitoring has been developed in agreement with the Environment Agency and in cooperation with the British Geological Survey, who, as others have already said, are carrying out their own programmes of monitoring in the Vale of Pickering. The BGS are collecting samples from Third Energy's monitoring boreholes at the well site and the off-site locations that we are monitoring too. The monitoring that we are doing is an extensive study. It highlights the acknowledged sensitivity of these works and how we can help to allay local concerns. And we will continue monitoring right up until the start of the development, then during the development and afterwards to ensure that we have a robust and comprehensive dataset. All the monitoring results are and will continue to be reviewed by the Environment Agency. To provide further confidence in this process, we will be also making data publicly accessible as and when it becomes available. On a final note, I would like to say there is an awful lot of scaremongering when it comes to the potential impacts on water from hydraulic fracturing. It is very easy for self-appointed experts to create fear. It is much harder to demonstrate and to justify to the regulators that hydraulic fracturing can be done safely, but that is exactly what we have done, and it is exactly why the Environment Agency has issued an environmental permit and other permits for these works. In reaching your decision today, I sincerely hope that you will place the relevant amount of weight on your planning officer's recommendation, and I hope that what I have had to say provides a reassurance that the water aspects of this planning application have been thoroughly assessed and considered. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Nigel Rockliff, followed by Andrew Corkhill.
with best practice guidance and in consultation with North Yorkshire County Council's landscape officer. The study area for the assessment was limited to a distance of five kilometres, but I also considered the effects on the North York Moors National Park and the Hawardian Hills AOMB slightly further afield. The landscape and visual effects at each phase of the development were assessed separately. And if I could refer you to my first slide. The slide or the table on the wall indicates the maximum size of equipment at each phase of the process and the length of time it would be present on site. It should be noted that the tallest structures proposed are the 37 metre high workover rig and the 25 metre high coil tubing tower, phases one and two, which would be on site for a maximum of two and six weeks respectively. Have the next slide please? For comparison purposes, I've shown a drawing here which compares the cliffhanger ride at Flamingoland, which is 55 metres tall, against the phase one workover rig, which is 37 metres tall, and that would be the tallest structure which would be present on site for approximately, well, up to two weeks. In terms of landscape effects, the key issues are: the existing landscape is reasonably attractive but not remarkable; its characteristics are commonplace across the region; the well site is not located within Greenbelt, National Park, AOMB or a special landscape area; the surrounding landscape contains large commercial-scale agricultural buildings, a number of vertical structures, including silos, communication masts, wind turbines and theme park rides. The development would take place at an existing production facility which is surrounded by trees on three sides. Proposals would not extend beyond the existing well site boundary, and therefore there would be no loss of vegetation or modification to the landform until the well site is restored. Consequently, the direct effects on the landscape would be negligible. In terms of visual effects, I'd like to refer you to my next set of photo montages or illustrations. I'll just briefly talk through these. This is showing phase one from Habton Road. There's a gap in the hedge there and we are seeing the coil, sorry, the workover 37 metre high workover rig and the acoustic barrier round the bottom of it. That would be there for two weeks. Next slide please. This is from the same location and it shows the 25 metre high coil tubing tower that would be on site for six weeks. Next slide please. This is a closer viewpoint taken from the public footpath which passes along the northern edge of the site. Again, this is the phase one, which will be there for two weeks. And the next slide is the coil tubing tower that will be there for six weeks. The prominent above-ground apparatus shown in the visualisations, including the workover rig, coil tubing tower and the acoustic barrier, will be visible for a maximum period of eight weeks, after which they will be replaced with low-level equipment similar to the existing situation and will be largely screened by the perimeter vegetation. The only location from which the low-level production equipment will be visible will be from the public footpath immediately adjacent to the well site. While some screening will be afforded by the existing perimeter bund, the recent boundary planting at the northern end of the site is currently too small and too sparse to provide effective screening of the footpath. To rectify this, the planting would be augmented with native trees and shrubs, plus approximately 80 larger trees to provide more immediate screening. In addition, a native hedgerow would be planted round the outer edge of the bund and the northern site boundary. The new planting would incorporate compost fertiliser and would be maintained to encourage rapid establishment. Any dead or dying plants would be replaced at the end of each season. The planting proposals were submitted to North Yorkshire County Council in October 2015, and the next slide shows those proposals. The photographs on the right show that, the boundary I'm talking about, which has had some recent planting but is not yet mature. The drawing on the left-hand side shows the green areas round the northern part of the site, which will be planted up with additional planting and the hedgerow. In conclusion, my assessment did not identify any significant landscape or visual effects beyond the initial eight-week period, after which the tall equipment would be removed. During the operational phases, there will be no effect on residential properties, listed buildings or scheduled monuments within the study area. Neither would the development be visible from the North York Moors National Park or the Hawardian Hills AOMB. Any localised effects on the adjacent right-of-way would be minimised by planting measures proposed, which form part of this planning application. Longer term, when production has ceased, the well site will be returned back to agricultural use. Overall, I'm of the opinion that there are no valid reasons on landscape or visual grounds to refuse this application. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Andrew Corkhill, followed by Joe Atkinson.
My name is Andrew Corkhill and I work with Spectral Acoustic Consultants. I lead the team which carried out the noise assessment for the proposed development of KM8. I'm also managing director of the firm and have 35 years' experience as a noise and vibration consultant. I've worked extensively on onshore and offshore projects during this time and have particular experience of assessing, measuring and silencing onshore drilling and workover rigs, starting right back in the 1980s and 90s and continuing to the present day. I'd like to run through what I believe to be the four key points that have come out of the noise assessment, and after that, show a few slides which I hope would address some of the concerns I heard raised by objectors on Friday. Now, my first point is that the levels of noise from the proposed development are compliant at all stages, generally with some margin, with government noise guidance and meet numerical noise limits for both short and long-term activities. I am fully confident on this matter, after the concerns raised on Friday, that this is indeed the case. At the commencement of the project, I met with Rydell District Council's Environmental Health Officer to discuss and agree the relevant guidance and share with him both the locations and the duration of the baseline noise monitoring programme. The discussions were informative and we took on board the need to draft a detailed noise management and monitoring plan and submit this with the application, which we have done. I have read and heard the repeated concerns and fears of many residents who say that this development will cause disturbance from noise. Now, my detailed and very careful assessment, supported by technical measurement and predictive data, draws the contrary conclusion, which is that there will be no significant disturbance from noise. Now, this conclusion is also drawn by officers from North Yorkshire County Council and Rydell District Council, after having reviewed detailed submissions from both myself and also from the Noise Specialists Commission by Frac Free Rydell. Now, turning to the initial two-week pre-stimulation stage of the project. Noise during the day and the night from workover rig operations will be typically no greater than 42 decibels at the nearest house and less than 35 decibels at the edge of Kirby Missperton. It's during this phase that the temporary acoustic barrier will begin to have great benefit to almost all the community. Workover rigs are not the same as drilling rigs. Drilling rigs have a key source high in the drilling mast, which is the top drive, and top drives are difficult to acoustically shield. Workover rigs don't have this drive and all their noise generating equipment is at ground level, where acoustic screening effects can be maximised. Now, to the south of the site, where access requirement limits scope for screening, there is however a single property where levels may be a little higher. However, it is expected that at the detailed design stage, a review of the final line taken by the acoustic barrier with the noise sources behind it will be carried out in order to maximise the benefit at this location and ensure noise consistently remains below the 45 decibel significance threshold limit. During the following six weeks, which is the hydraulic fracturing and well test phase, the ambient noise levels during the daytime will indeed rise for some short periods. With a noise barrier in place, the levels at the nearest residential receptor will be 54 decibels, and outside the properties on the edge of Kirby Missperton, 52 decibels. This level is due to be generated on just five occasions, for five hours each occasion over this six-week period. Now, whilst the relevant significant threshold within this assessment is 70 decibels, there is another criterion often imposed to avoid significant effect by local planning authorities during the construction of new houses, offices, commercial buildings. This is 65 decibels at sensitive receptors, and such building projects can run for months at this sort of noise level, but it is always understood that the impact of construction is only temporary. The highest daytime noise levels during the six-week hydraulic fracturing and well testing phase will be very much lower than this limit and their duration is much shorter. Now, if the same noise levels of 54 decibels predicted, and even now being challenged by some as being not onerous enough, were to be imposed during, for example, the construction of a new health centre or residential care home in one of the villages, it would be unlikely that such a building could be built within the constraints of such an onerous noise constraint. The point I make here is that short-term daytime noise levels of up to 65 decibels are commonly experienced and indeed accepted by the community on a wide range of projects. Now, my concluding point before I turn to some slides is that once into production testing and then normal gas production, the noise levels at houses will be much the same as they are at other producing gas wells in the area, which is very quiet at about 25 decibels. At these sorts of levels, those living perhaps as close as 200 metres from a well site would be most unlikely to hear or even be aware of any noise. So maybe if I can have the first slide? Slide one shows the special elevated noise monitor we installed to measure the baseline noise for two weeks at Five Shire Grove at the request of Third Energy and as agreed with the owner, Susan Raymond. Third Energy were concerned that this resident had historically been concerned about noise from drilling and wanted to be able to reassure and demonstrate to her that she should not be disturbed by noise from this particular development, especially as an acoustic barrier was being considered. And slide two? Slide two shows the working farm, Kirby O'Car, located to the south of the site, where because of the need for safe access on and off the site, there is no acoustic screening benefit. I have marked the location of the milking machine at Kirby O'Car. Now, this generates a high level of noise, around 58 to 65 decibels, at the residential properties within this working farm complex. This arises each day at 5am for around one hour and then at other milking times of day. You may recall Susan Raymond mentioned the noise in her statement to members on Friday. Now, our monitoring confirmed, as one might expect, that this pattern of noise continued over each and every 24-hour period. Slide three shows the orientation, it's not as clear as it might be in the room, and distances to Little Bath. I include this as there were concerns from Karen Garrett that noise to her community had not been considered, and in her written testimony that the acoustic barrier did not align in their particular direction. However, you will see that the nearest receptor in this particular direction is Alma Farm, which is sort of to the north-west at 300 metres, and that Little Bath is four times further away at 1200 metres, and around twice the distance as properties in Kirby Missperton, which is shown as 650 metres to the north-east. You can see Kirby O'Car is just to the south of the site. Being to the west of the site, residents of Little Bath will benefit from the acoustic screen. You will also see the nearer well site that Susan Goff, I believe, referred to this morning. You'll see that that website is around 300 metres away from Little Bath. I've identified that as KM Westwell Site. But I would point to the fact that the application is relating to KM8 and this is 1200 metres away. The next slide shows the four noise contour maps that I would just like to show, and it's for the pre-stimulation workover activity. This is the day and night, and this would be typical of any workover activity at one of a number of well sites in the area. Such work would generally be undertaken without any acoustic barrier in place, and that's what this contour map shows. So if we can turn to the next slide? In this instance, you can see in this slide the benefit of adding the proposed acoustic barrier. And here, again, we focus on nighttime periods. You'll notice that there is a marked noise reduction to the west, to the north and to the east. To the south, the noise is unchanged. The barrier material is partially sound absorbent, so will not reflect noise back in a southerly direction. Slide six shows the acoustic barrier still in place during the phase two hydraulic fracturing during the day. There is an elevated level of noise as anticipated. However, the levels are not especially high and well within thresholds...
We'll have to just adjourn a minute, one of the councillors needs to go out. If you can just hold on please. We're all back now, can you continue?
There is an elevated level of noise as anticipated, however, the levels are not especially high and well within thresholds. At Five Shire Grove, for example, the predicted levels, this is right to the top right of the image, the predicted levels during the day are less than 50 decibels. Now, my final slide shows what happens after the initial eight weeks has concluded. The levels of noise return to how they are today, which is inaudible. I wanted to show this slide as the application is for production for up to nine years at this site, and many on Friday were concerned that there would be high levels of noise from the site for the whole of this period. This is clearly not going to be the case. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. I'll now call Jo Atkinson, followed by Shaun Smart.
Good afternoon and thank you for your time today. I am Jo Atkinson, a principal ecologist with ACOM, a global engineering and environmental consultancy. I have a degree in zoology and have worked in ecological consultancy for 12 years. I am a full member of the Chartered Institute of Ecology and Environmental Management, and as such I'm bound by the institute's professional code of conduct when undertaking ecology surveys and assessments. I will run through a brief summary of the findings of the ecological impact assessment we completed, and will then run through four specific concerns raised during the consultation period by objectors with respect to great crested newts, bats, barn owls, and European-designated sites. I would like to reiterate to the committee and to reassure the general public listening here today that a detailed and robust ecological impact assessment was completed for the project, and that no objections have been raised in respect of ecology by the county council's own ecologist or by Natural England. An appropriate level of survey effort was employed, which included a site visit and habitat survey to assess the site. This informed the conclusion that there is no potential for protected species to be present in the footprint of the well pad, because the area in question comprises entirely hard standing within the operational area of the previously drilled KM8 well, and therefore does not support any natural habitats. The habitats associated with the woodland screening belts surrounding the well site will not be adversely affected by the works. I understand that there were several references in Friday's representations to a flow chart, and the inference was that the approach taken to the ecological impact assessment was in some way flawed and could not allow the council to make an informed decision on the application. However, I would reiterate that the approach we have taken is fully in accordance with the National Planning Policy Framework and Natural England's standing advice. The guidance documents clearly state that there is no requirement for protected species surveys where there is no reasonable likelihood of them being present and significantly affected by the works, as is the case for this scheme. This approach was agreed with the county council at the scoping stage prior to the submission of the application through early engagement with the planning team. The ecological impact assessment considered all potential impacts on protected species and sites outside the well site boundary, including indirect effects from noise and visual disturbance, and changes in air quality and hydrology. This assessment included consideration of all pathways by which protected species, such as those referred to in my introduction, could be affected, as well as other species for which concerns were raised in representations to the committee on Friday and earlier this morning, such as brown hare, badgers, and terrestrial invertebrates. The assessment concluded that there would be no significant effects on ecology, and as you will be aware from the committee report, this conclusion was supported by the county council's own ecological adviser. In respect of great crested newts, two ponds are present within 500 metres of the well site at Alma Farm, and this fact was acknowledged in the ecological impact assessment. Concerns have been raised by objectors as to why these ponds were not surveyed. This was because there is no suitable habitat for great crested newts within the well pad area, as it is entirely hard standing, and therefore there is no risk of the species being impacted by the works, even if they were present in the pond. For bats, the potential for foraging and commuting bats along the hedgerows outside but near to the well site boundary was acknowledged and fully assessed in the ecological impact assessment. Any temporary displacement to bats due to noise and visual disturbance was assessed to be minor and not significant due to the sensitive lighting of the site, which is implicit within the lighting design strategy. Surveys outside the well site boundary for bats, for example a survey of the reported bat roost at Sugar Hill Cottage, which lies approximately 165 metres north-west of the well site, or of bat activity along the hedgerow to the west of the site, were not considered necessary based on the limited and temporary impacts of the scheme that will not significantly affect bats. For barn owls, the reported presence of a nesting pair at Alma Farm was raised during consultation, and concerns were expressed by objectors that potential impacts on barn owls had not been assessed. However, the ecological impact assessment did consider the potential effects of lighting disturbance to foraging nocturnal fauna, including owls, and concluded that any temporary displacement would be minor and not significant due to the sensitive lighting design. For European-designated sites, potential impacts on the River Derwent Special Area of Conservation via surface water pollution to the Sugar Hill Drain, which runs adjacent to the well site, were assessed to be not significant due to embedded mitigation to carefully control surface water runoff. I would reiterate that the county council's own habitats regulations assessment found that there would be no likely significant effects on European-designated sites, and this conclusion was agreed by Natural England in their consultation response, which stated that, based on the information provided, Natural England advises the council that the proposal is unlikely to affect any statute-protected sites or landscapes. In summary, a detailed ecological impact assessment has been completed and has found that the scheme would have no significant effects on ecology, a conclusion which is supported by an appropriate level of survey effort as directed by the national guidelines. As the members will be aware, this conclusion is supported in the committee report before them, and there have been no objections on the grounds of ecology by any statutory consultees, including the county council's own ecological adviser and Natural England. I would like to draw the members' attention to the closing statement in the committee report in respect of ecology, which concludes that, there is nothing arising, provided that both best practices followed and adequate mitigation is undertaken, which would give rise to a conclusion that these impacts on the natural environment, including those upon protected species and/or designated habitats, would be materially both significant or adverse to such a degree that would warrant refusal on this grounds alone. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have Shaun Smart now. Yeah, Lenny. Right. Lenny's going to show the video. So the next speaker is Shaun Smart, and then I understand that Lee Pets has not arrived, so we're having a video of what he would have said.
Thank you, Chairman. My name is Shaun Smart, and I am a safety and environmental adviser for Zetland Group, the company responsible for obtaining planning permission and environmental permits for the KM8 hydraulic fracturing operation on behalf of Third Energy. In the context of the KM8 permit application, I have been working with our specialist consultants and service providers to present the impacts of the proposed development on air quality and on waste, both in the environmental permit application and planning application. It is these two specific subjects I would like to present to you today. With respect to air quality, a very detailed air quality impact assessment was undertaken to support both the planning application and environmental permit application. As part of this assessment, baseline air quality measurements were taken. On Friday, Frack Free Rydell's expert raised a few questions regarding the assessment. Firstly, figure A2, taken from the air quality impact assessment, was presented to committee members, and it was stated that there are no receptors at the residential properties where the impacts will be greatest. In response, I can confirm that the receptors used in this assessment have been consistent throughout, and whilst the pattern of dispersion in this case does show a higher impact at the residential locations on Habden Road, which are further from the well site than those used in the assessment, the differences are small and the overall conclusion of the assessment is unchanged. In the air quality impact assessment, the mean value for benzene was calculated in error. However, none of the individual monthly measurements changed. A subsequent submission to the Minerals Planning Authority corrected this error. As indicated in the most recent submission on behalf of Third Energy, it is considered that the period largely reflects the area of background baseline with low, mostly below the level of detection, measurements for organic compounds and nitrogen dioxide values around DEFRA's air quality archive level. The difference between the baseline sampling rounds two and three for organic compounds are largely considered to be a result of plant maintenance operations on the site. It should be noted that the sampling points are located on the boundary of the well site, and as such would be likely to be far more impacted upon by such low-level releases than the nearest residential property. The values are therefore not considered to be representative of the general area, and it would not be reasonable to employ these values in any assessment of air quality. I would also like to point out that the British Geological Survey has been and is continuing to undertake independent air quality monitoring at the KM8 well site, the results of which will be publicly available. These points and a number of other points were raised in the Frack Free Rydell objection, which they have submitted to North Yorkshire County Council in response to consultation on the planning application. Neither the environmental health officer at Rydell District Council or the Environment Agency have objected to the planning application, and subject to conditions, both have confirmed that they are satisfied with the air quality impact assessment and its conclusions. I would now like to move forward with my second subject with respect to flowback water and the waste disposal routes available. The Environment Agency has undertaken a detailed review of the waste management plans for the proposed KM8 hydraulic fracturing operation, and has subsequently issued permits. In other words, the Environment Agency is satisfied with the waste management arrangements. Yet on Friday, we heard from a number of speakers who stated there were no feasible disposal routes for flowback water, which is not correct. Likewise, there were a number of speakers who made reference to there being no best available technique for waste disposal. Again, this is not correct. The Environment Agency regulates the management of extractive waste generated by mining waste activities. With respect to the KM8 hydraulic fracture operation, mining waste includes flowback water generated as a result of the hydraulic fracturing operation, which is expected to be between 30% and 50% of the fluid used per fracture treatment. In order to authorise the management and disposal of flowback water, Third Energy was required to apply for a mining waste permit. Flowback water may contain naturally occurring radioactive material, commonly referred to as NORM, which exists in most groundwater as a result of radionuclides dissolving in water within the formation and their subsequent transport to the surface in flowback water or produced water. You may be interested to know that NORM is present in drinking water, often at levels which would exceed the NORM concentration threshold were it to be considered a NORM industrial activity by the Environment Agency, which drinking water is not. The production of oil or gas, however, is considered NORM industrial activity, and therefore requires a radioactive substances permit should the concentration levels exceed those set out in regulation. This in turn requires the operator to determine the best available technique for NORM disposal. A best available technique statement was prepared by Third Energy's radioactive waste advisers in support of the mining waste permit application, submitted to and approved by the Environment Agency. The statement concluded that the best available technique for the NORM is for it to be transported off-site to a bespoke, permitted industrial wastewater treatment facility, the process of which I will now explain to you briefly. Flowback water from the well will be diverted to bundled storage tanks on-site. If it is not to be reused in the subsequent hydraulic fracture treatments, a sample of the flowback water will be taken and analysed both by the radioactive waste adviser and Third Energy. The flowback water will then be transported from the on-site tanks to road tanker and transported off-site by a licensed haulier to an Environment Agency-permitted wastewater treatment works facility, where it is processed, treated, and discharged in accordance with the permitted controls of the waste treatment facility. Third Energy has agreements in principle for the waste disposal of two facilities. Copies of the agreements in principle were provided to the Environment Agency in support of the permit application. As shown on slide two, the wastewater will be discharged from a sump to a reaction vessel where it will mix with wastewater from other industrial processes. Once placed within the reaction vessel, a lime slurry and iron-rich hydrochloric acid is added. The natural reaction between the wastewater, lime, and iron results in dissolved metal which forms an insoluble precipitate. Following completion of the reaction process, the liquid waste is transferred to treatment sludge tanks where it will be mixed slowly, allowing the sludge to become readily filterable substance for the next stage of treatment. The sludge is then filtered using a filter press which separates the liquid and solid contents of the sludge, with the majority of NORM being held within the solid compound. The liquid is discharged into effluent tanks and, following final testing, is discharged to a sewage treatment facility. The solid waste, once compressed into a filter cake, will be collected and sent to a permitted landfill site for disposal. If NORM is present within the filter cake, it is not expected to be greater than five beckerels per gram, which is the upper threshold level whereby NORM waste can be disposed of to a permitted landfill site. If the filter cake is greater than five beckerels per gram, then the filter cake will be transferred to an alternate landfill site, which is permitted by the Environment Agency to receive waste greater than five beckerels per gram. To put this into perspective, five beckerels per gram is equivalent to an activity level of 25 Brazil nuts placed on a shelf in your local supermarket. Following the initial treatment and wastewater treatment works facility, the liquid reaches the sewage treatment facility whereby it undergoes further treatment, in line with the domestic wastewater. The treated aqueous waste is then in an acceptable condition to be discharged to the environment, thus completing the water cycle. The environmental statement indicated that the flowback water produced during the KM8 hydraulic fracturing operation represents only 1.07% of the total receiving capacity within North Yorkshire and neighbouring counties. To summarise, there are indeed treatment facilities available to safely dispose of flowback water, and with respect to the KM8 hydraulic fracturing operation, this approach is considered best available technique. The statement made on Friday that there are no treatment facilities available to treat flowback water, and that there is no best available technique, is simply incorrect. The treatment and disposal of wastewater containing NORM is not new, nor is it confined to oil and gas activities. There are many industries in the UK that generate waste containing NORM, and they are well-established Environment Agency-permitted treatment facilities available. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I understand we're now going to see a video, is that correct?
Audio, audio chairman.
Audio, all right.
I'm an environmental consultant with 20 years' relevant experience and the managing director of Remsol, a Lancashire-based environmental consultancy. But I'm also the chief executive of the Onshore Energy Services Group, which is a trade association that exists to advance the interests of British SMEs in the supply chain that supports onshore oil and gas, and it's in this capacity that I speak today. As I'm sure you'll know, North Yorkshire has a long history of hosting and benefiting from the extractive industries. It's also been an energy innovator. Shale gas is just the latest chapter in this story. Ironstone, for instance, was being mined and worked in North Yorkshire as far back as the 16th century, including at Revo Abbey in Rydell. Whitby is famous for its whaling industry that saw blubber rendered into oil that was then used to light the streets of the town and other places nearby. Now, whether it's those early mineral workings or the development of a whaling industry that provided North Yorkshire with fuel, it's clear that none of it could have happened without a local supply chain that would have needed a local workforce. It may have been hard and dirty work, and it probably didn't pay very well, but it did create jobs and opportunity for local people whilst providing the materials needed in making other industries successful. A future shale gas industry will also require a supply chain that will support local employment, and it too will contribute to the energy and feedstocks needed by other industries if they're to thrive. Even when a more specialist service is being performed by companies from outside the area like drilling, there's still a place for North Yorkshire SMEs. At our recent Scarborough Conference, for instance, we heard how one of the UK's biggest independent drilling contractors, P.R. Marriott, has spent over 2.8 million in the area in the last three years. At the Onshore Energy Services Group- of Remsol, a Lancashire-based environmental consultancy. But I'm also the chief executive of the Onshore Energy Services Group, which is a trade association that exists to advance the interests of British SMEs in the supply chain that supports onshore oil and gas, and it's in this capacity that I speak today. As I'm sure you'll know, North Yorkshire has a long history of hosting and benefiting from the extractive industries. It's also been an energy innovator. Shale gas is just the latest chapter in this story. Ironstone, for instance, was being mined and worked in North Yorkshire as far back as the 16th century, including at Revo Abbey in Rydell. Whitby is famous for its whaling industry that saw blubber rendered into oil that was then used to light the streets of the town and other places nearby. Now whether it's those early mineral workings or the development of a whaling industry that provided North Yorkshire with fuel, it's clear that none of it could have happened without a local supply chain that would have needed a local workforce. It may have been hard and dirty work, and it probably didn't pay very well, but it did create jobs and opportunity for local people whilst providing the materials needed in making other industries successful. A future shale gas industry will also require a supply chain that will support local employment, and it too will contribute to the energy and feedstocks needed by other industries if they're to thrive. Even when a more specialist service is being performed by companies from outside the area, like drilling, there's still a place for North Yorkshire SMEs. At our recent Scarborough Conference, for instance, we heard how one of the UK's biggest independent drilling contractors, PR Marriott, has spent over 2.8 million in the area in the last three years. At the Onshore Energy Services Group, we want to see local SMEs positioned to make the most of the supply chain roles that come along, and we're working to make that happen. We know that small businesses have had a tough time since the financial crash of 2008, and we're eager to explore new opportunities that can provide stability, continuity of work and job security for the people they employ. We also know that it's these smaller companies that are much more likely to have to take on and train new people in order to grow and meet the additional demands placed on them by working the onshore oil and gas industry. North Yorkshire has a fantastic opportunity ahead of it. It could start to see supply chain clusters as expertise established locally dominated by SMEs, just as they have in support of Britain's aerospace and automotive sectors. The creation of supply chain linkages like this can have a significant multiplier effect, and make an even more attractive for inward investment by strengthening local economic performance as a whole, even for businesses that don't participate directly in the supply chain. The National Planning Policy Framework recognises this. It says that local planning authorities, when deciding applications for minerals extraction, should give great weight to the benefits of mineral extraction, including to the economy. A North Yorkshire shale gas industry can contribute to job security, job growth and investment in the region, but it needs to be given a chance to do so, and this planning application is that chance. As someone who has made a successful career out of a passion for the environment, I wouldn't support this industry unless I was sure it could operate safely and in environmentally sensitive manner, but I do support it. On behalf of the Onshore Energy Services Group and North Yorkshire SMEs, I respectfully urge the committee to accept the recommendations of the council's expert planning officers and to approve the application in front of it. Many thanks.
Hello, I'm Lee Petz.
Right, so the next presentation is Ian Gare, so we'll just have that one presentation, and then we'll break for lunch.
Thank you, Chairman, and good afternoon. My name is Ian Gare. I'm commercial manager with Third Energy at the Napton Generating Station. I was not tabled to speak today, but having witnessed some of what I can only call the performances on Friday, I felt compelled to. Thank you for the opportunity. I became an adoptive Yorkshireman in 1996, when I moved here with my family to manage a small, 35 employee manufacturing business. Sadly, in 2006, under the weight of impossible competitive pressure from imported Chinese products, the company closed its doors and 35 jobs were lost. In 2007, I was lucky enough to be offered a commercial role in a small, onshore gas exploration and electricity generating business. A what? I had no idea that such a business existed. I had never been involved in any oil and gas business, and I, like the majority of people, took things for granted. I would turn on my lights, cook my food, use my computer, charge my mobile phone. Who would have thought that the computer and mobile phone would be used to wage a virtual war against the suppliers of the energy that they need to function? Nine years later, I know a lot more. I know that it's a highly regulated business, and that it is, like any other small business, fighting to do what it does as best it can. In those nine years, I've been closely involved in the drilling of six wells, in Pickering, Eberston, and yes, four in Kirby-Mispaton. I closely missed the two before that, another on Eberston and another in Kirby-Mispaton. Where were the protesters then? Where are the local people whose lives have been ruined by multiple large-scale projects compared to the current application? I am confused. Nine years ago, the shale gas boom was no more than a twinkle in other people's eyes. It certainly wasn't in the eyes of the company. Nor were social media and the need to keep the PR wheels turning. I've watched and been closely involved in that evolutionary experience, while also enjoying watching employees flourish under Third Energy's ownership, with job progression through the ranks, several apprenticeships, on-the-job training and an annual interni scheme to introduce university students to their potential in this industry. I'm very involved in procurement activities and work with several groups set up to do our very best to ensure that local businesses are ready and equipped to support this industry's growth. This is not a selfless enterprise. This is to ensure that we can get the best equipment readily available when we need it. I've also watched as the anti-oil and gas industry protesters have upped their campaigns of misinformation and brought scare stories to others. I've been offended and upset by some of those presentations on Friday. Okay, there are always two sides to an argument. Opinions may differ, but I ask, please do not insult the integrity and work ethic of my colleagues, young and old, new to the industry and experienced. We work hard and effectively to satisfy all that is required of us by the many regulators in our field. Regulators who themselves have been overwhelmed with senseless and time-wasting challenges and requests, solely to cause nuisance and slow down the democratic process. Committee members, I do not need to remind you that your decision today is about one small but significant operation, an operation that not one of North Yorkshire County Council's experts has an objection to. I do need to remind those people observing this process, though. Do not be fooled by crowds of cries of foul or precedent setting. That's not the way the system works, and nor should it be. This proposal is to test the commercial potential of this well. Whatever happens beyond that will be with the permission of and under the eagle eye of multiple regulators, their peers and the people. Would you stifle a child at birth for fear of what it would grow into? No, you would nurture, advise, guide and watch that child flourish. Right now, the already grown child is suffering at the hands of needless intervention and protest to do things that would normally be standard practice. This has to stop. I urge you to approve this application. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will now adjourn for lunch and we'll reconvene at 1.30.